I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall. Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Wygott.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Alderman Randall is excused. Roll call of department heads, please.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor. Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregawitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Salvatore.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belville.
Here.
Health and Housing Director John Philibom.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Inessa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here. Kenny Vaughn's excused and Deputy Fire Chief Bud Jacobs is filling in for Tom Poor tonight. He's excused. Is that the only two?
Yep.
All right. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you're able and you would stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. This time, I want to remind us of a couple things. We got a few faces I haven't seen in a long time or maybe for the first time, so if we would have to leave this building for the sake of smoke or fire, the police department is in the back of the room, several officers, including the chief. There's two exits in the main lobby. We'd ask that you go outside promptly and carefully, but we would ask that you'd consider going across the street carefully and meeting in front of the courthouse their sign. We just give us a chance then to come out there and make sure that people who are there, we can chat and make sure everybody that they were with is accounted for. If we had a storm and you're ever in here and we had to go to the basement, once again, the police officers will guide you across the lobby. Right across from the city clerk's counter, there's a stairway going downstairs and they'll guide you to the basement where it's definitely a safe storm shelter. Hope we don't need that, but you need to be reminded of those things. Tonight, in just a few minutes, I'll open public participation. When I open public participation, if you'd like to speak, I'd ask you to raise your hand, wait till you're called on, and then proceed to the microphone, give your name, try to keep your comments to about two to three minutes, and it should be pertaining to City of Belleville's issues or stuff on the agenda preferably. The meeting is being recorded both by video and by audio, so please, Aldermen, speak into the microphones and likewise, public, if you're coming forward or for any other part of the meeting, just speak into the microphone, please. At this time, we have no public hearing this evening. The public participation, I'll open it up now. Is anyone interested in saying anything this evening? Back of the room.
Stuart Lanard, Bellville, Ohio. The Pledge of Allegiance, I don't think anyone realizes how phony saying the pledge and the word of the month sound when vote fraud is encouraged by a political party and nothing is done to prevent it. Even the voting machines in the courthouse are rigged. That Union School project, I noticed it's still not done, and I talked to several people about it, and they said, really, that's mainly, that whole business is mainly for the administrators and the teachers. It's got not very little to do with the students, and as I say, it's still not done, and I think there's some fraud going on. I've seen ten copper wire, gobs of copper wire insulation after somebody stripped all these, all this copper, insulation off this copper wire. The dumpster was almost full of it. When you're doing a wire in a building, you don't have to strip more than ten inches of copper wire. You don't have to strip ten, strip ten feet, I don't think. And I think somebody's running off with this copper wire, the, and you're always talking about buying in Belleville. Well, this contractor's from St. Louis, and I don't think they'll ever get it done. It's still not done. And I noticed, I don't think they know what they're doing because if, I'm a dumpster diver, and if you got, look in them dumpsters over there at Union School, you'll find brand-new stuff that they evidently put in there, and then somebody come along and say, no, that ain't supposed to go there, then they rip it out, throw it in the dumpster, gotta put some new stuff in there.
Okay, we're getting close to it.
Okay. I had about $750 to $800 worth of welded equipment stolen out of my shop. I reported it about four days ago, and so far, I have never been asked if I had any idea as to who may have taken it, and I finally had to basically do my own detective work. I went down to the railroad track, went down the railroad tracks, and one of the perpetrators was camped out in the woods back there along the railroad tracks, and I confronted him, and he got pretty hostile. So I come back and called the police, but for some reason, the police couldn't find the place. I told them it's where there's a big red metal cover over something, and there's a pair of blue jeans. They didn't find it. I still haven't talked to the police or anything else about it. It's really a ship-shod investigation, is all I can say. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. We will move on. This time, we have a proclamation, and I am going to take a moment to read it because I think it, I think it speaks to all of us about the volunteer spirit in Belleville. Proclamation, actually, it's, each year, we recognize this effort. Says, "Whereas the City of Belleville is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and is why Belleville actively works to be a community of character. And whereas Belleville is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction into their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. Whereas it is evident that the establishment of the basic initiative, Belleville Community of Character Initiative, and it is evident through community-wide projects such as Paint the Town, Mission Continues, South Side Park Project, Bellevue Park Community Work Day, and with the Belleville Helping Belleville Days, as we've been having each year for a number of years, as well as the countless continuing service rising from our schools, churches, service agencies, and business, which help establish Belleville's status as an all-America city. Whereas Belleville is a community which chose to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community, and will honor such individuals at its annual Citizens of Character Dinner. And whereas Belleville acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile American Foundation to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2018, as Belleville, being a community of character, continues to highlight the belief that communities are made stronger through individuals and organizations who dedicate themselves to going the extra mile in volunteerism and spirit and service. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Belleville, to hereby proclaim November 1st, 2018 to be Extra Mile Day in Belleville, and encourage each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her own life and to acknowledge all those around us who are inspirational in their efforts to make their organizations, families, communities, country, or world a better place. November 13th, I believe, is the date that we will have the Character Dinner this year. If you don't know and you're interested, please check, you can check with anybody. You can check with various departments here at the city or even the switchboard, they'll guide you. But the Community of Character Dinner is truly a wonderful evening where the Basic Initiative recognizes 12 individuals each year who exemplify the character traits. And, you know, I think it's very important that we pause to read that proclamation each year because we are very blessed. We have a lot of people that give a lot of time back to this community, and that's why at soon-to-be January 205 years old, that's why we're still alive and well and strong because of the people who give back in so many unique ways. So thanks to everybody who volunteers, and remember to continue to volunteer, and don't forget the Character Dinner. At this time, I go on to appointments. I'd ask for a motion to appoint three of the people I'm nominating tonight to the Historic Preservation Commission. Justin Dominique, Nicole Hettenhausen, and Linda Weisenstein, each to serve a one-year term on this commission. I'll go ahead and take the motion by Andy Gah, second by Shelley Schaefer. Just let me say that I sat down with staff and with the president, the chairman, the chairperson of the commission, and we went over these nominations, these recommendations, and they all were very, very pleased with them coming on board. So at this time, we have a motion and accept, second, to approve these three recommendations. These are new members. Is there any questions about anything? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I will recommend the reappointment of Ashley Pollak and Keith Owens to each serve a one-year term on Historic Preservation Commission. Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Pusa. Any questions on that motion? Once again, roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. This time, we go over to number eight, approve all the minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of October 1st, 2018. Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Wigington. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of approving, filing the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We now have claims, payroll, and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $3,69,513.29 and the payroll in the amount of $862,180. Hear a motion? Alderman Anthony, second by Schaefer. Any discussion on the claims, payroll, or dispersments? Roll call.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports, I'd ask for a motion to receive and file the Treasurer's Report of August 2018 and a Statement of Cash and Investment Report of August 2018. Motion by Elmore, second by Pusa. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor of receiving and filing for audit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go to oral reports. Motion from Health and Housing. Jane.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the grass and yard maintenance agreement with Mitten Outdoor Services Incorporated, January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021.
Motion by Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Steele. Do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Bitner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Traffic. Alderman Ovian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 11B1, motion to approve the loading zone, no parking sign, at Faith Beth's Church Food Pantry, located at 428 East A Street. Loading zone to be located in two parking lots directly south of East A Street on the west side of Walnut Street, weekdays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Ovian, second by Alderman Pusa. Do I hear any discussion on this motion coming from the Traffic Committee? Discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, at this time, then, I'm going to ask for a motion, I'm going to ask for you to vote, all in favor, and have the proper ardent and strong. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Set that a little bit back, I was trying to trick you. So all in favor, have the proper, we voted aye. Any nays? Motion carries, and we will have that ardent and strong. Motion from Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve fiscal year 2018 audit report.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second by Alderman Gah. Do we want to, Jamie, you got anything you want to comment on the audit this time, or?
So we went through it pretty well in the finance. Told Alderman if there was any questions, just to let us know. I haven't heard anything.
Okay, anybody have a question? We have a motion and second to approve the audit tonight, and does anybody have anything? Finance members, there was, the whole committee was present. Hearing no further questions, I'd ask for a roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla, you got 11C2.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve entering into a contract with a low bidder for 23 electric accounts not currently on our existing utility agreement.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear discussion on this item coming from Finance? Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to Zoning Board of Appeals. We got a bunch of them. Do you?
Read them together.
Do we have a problem with reading them together? Alderman.
11D8.
11D1?
11D8.
So you want to hold that one?
Yes.
So D8 and 9?
They're the same person.
I'm sorry.
Eight and nine.
D8 and 9?
Uh, nine also.
So, okay, so I'm going to ask for the clerk to read them and exclude, hold those two out, okay? So if we read these, Zoning Board of Appeals recommendations, and then I'll ask for a motion right after that.
11D1, 54 September 18, Kelly Rouse, a request for an area bulk variance to permit an eight-foot high fence at 501 East C Street, parcel number 08220317010, located in an A1 single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.392 and 162.570, Ward 2. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. 11D2, 55 September 18, Pedro Carranza, a request for a special use permit to construct a building larger than 150 square feet with metal exteriors at 815 South Illinois Street, parcel number 08280239018, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 5. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. 11D3, 56 September 18, Jerome Montgomery, a request for a used variance to operate a barber shop as a home occupation at 3028 West Main Street, parcel number 08170316015, located in a C1 light commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.232, 162.394, and 162.570, Ward 3. Zoning Board recommended approval with a vote of 5 to 0 to 1. Matosha Scott abstained. 11D4, 57 September 18, Lawrence and Deborah Kushon, a request for a special use permit to establish a modular home at 427 Shield Street, parcel number 08220124018, located in an A1 single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.094 and 162.515, Ward 2. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. 11D5, 58 September 18, Marco Investment Group LLC, a request for a special use permit to operate a commercial storage facility at 2391 West State Route 161, parcel number 08090300010, 08090300005, and 08090300003, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 3. Zoning Board recommended approval with a vote of 5 to 0 to 1. Tim Price abstained. 11D6, 59 September 18, Marco Investment Group LLC, a request for a special use permit to construct buildings larger than 150 square feet with metal exteriors at 2391 West State Route 161, parcel number 08090300010, 08090300005, and 08090300003, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code?
No, you did try.
162.248 and 162.515, Ward 3. Zoning Board recommended approval with a vote of 5 to 0 to 1. Tim Price abstained. 11D7, 60 September 18, Susan Dyer, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of Special Control for signage at 132 West Main Street, parcel number 08210443001, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 155.052 and 155.053, Ward 5. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve zoning recommendations, 11D1, 11D2, 11D3, 11D4, 11D5, 11D6, and 11D7? Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Consilla, and this would be to approve and have the proper ardent and strong. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now let's go to 11D8 and 9, if you would, Madam Clerk. Can you drink water?
11D8, 61 September 18, Guy Rav Patel, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 1721 South Belt West, parcel number 08200416001, and 08200416002, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 2. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only. Am I reading them?
Yeah, why don't you read them together? It's not a problem, is it?
I'm sorry.
Is it okay to read those two together?
Yes.
11D9, 62 September 18, Guy Rav Patel, a request for a special use permit to operate a convenience store at 1721 South Belt West, parcel number 08200416001, and 08200416002, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 2. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only.
First of all, I'd ask for a motion. Motion by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pusa.
My question is, I want to know if this individual has any other business locations in the City of Belleville.
They need that store.
Hello, my name is Guy Rav Patel, and to answer to your question is, no, I do not have any location in Belleville. I'm actually from Tennessee.
I'm sorry?
Tennessee.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So basically, this is your first venture into our city?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second to approve the zoning board's recommendation, which I believe in both cases was unanimous, to approve these two cases, 11D8, 11D9. So I'd ask at this time for all those in favor to approve and have the proper ardent and strong, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to Streets and Graves. Alderman Wigington?
11E-1, on behalf of Streets and Graves Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve agreement between Sinclair County Transit District and the City of Belleville for Archer Trail Loop. So moved.
Motion, second by Alderman Dittelman had his hand up first. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. We have any questions or comments? I'd ask for a roll call vote on this item.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask someone to consider making a motion to extend the dispatch contract with Signal Hill Fire Department for an additional year from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Steel. Any discussions on this item? Roll call.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one under administration. We have a, I, first of all, I'd like to see if there's a motion to put this, and then we'll go through and kind of explain a little bit. Asking for a motion to allow an appeal to take place here that's being appealed to the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of a design review request submitted by Pat Flynn for the property of 300 Narth Jackson. Alderman Guy, make the motion, second by Alderman Pousa. I think, I'll take questions in a minute, but if I can, Joel, or you, or Nissa, want somebody, want to start off by kind of explaining just a little bit about this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it okay to step to the microphone? And then possibly the homeowner. I think a little bit of history will help them understand quickly.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the request is to demolish an existing rear porch at 300 North Jackson Street. The applicant stated that there's some structural issues, and they're looking to demolish that and install a patio and then a second, a deck that would be accessible to the second story of the building. So in August, that came through. The contractor presented to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission requested that it be tabled until the following month in order to see just examples of materials, colors of the paint, and then they referred the applicant to the Design Guidelines Manual to see if they can make any revisions that would be better suited for the home. The one thing I want to mention is, is the Design Guideline Manual does not give specific guidelines for rear porches, which is what made this difficult for the applicant to find a design that would work well with them and what they wanted. For the September meeting, the applicant then supplied examples of other places in Belleville that had styles similar to what they wanted to do with the building, and then other types of historic homes. And if you'd like to know more about that, the homeowner is here, and he has those examples. So if you'd like him to speak more to the reasoning behind their design and why that's the design they chose, he is here as well.
So if I can add just to this body, when the applicant, I think, felt like he hit an impasse, he requested to have a meeting in my office and the staff and I, and the chairman of the commission, Molly McKenzie, was there, and we sat down and met, and he explained, you haven't owned this home real long, right, sir?
Yes, Mayor, I've owned it three years.
Three years, couple of years, and you just are, you just had left the service, I think, and you chose to live here?
Four weeks, sir. I retired four weeks. We chose to make Belleville our permanent home, and we bought this historic house to revitalize the neighborhood.
And what I would just like you to reiterate to the council, because I think it pretty much sums it up, you've done some studying on this, but you're looking about safety and about the reality of the cost, and explain the safety thing, because you've got a couple of children.
Correct, Mayor. I have four young children, eight and younger. Currently, the deck that's there now is rotting at the footings. It's not historical, it's actually probably built somewhere around 1960 or '70 based on materials. The previous owners just painted or caulked over everything, so when we bought it, we didn't realize that until after we moved in and it started falling off in pieces. But having four kids, and the size of our yard being as small as it is in the city of Belleville, putting a patio with, you know, eight inch rise is much more useful for a family of six in the Belleville for them to be able to run around and play. Of course, the other issue was the cost piece, the materials that we're using is a very high-end material, because we want it to last for a very prolonged period of time, and that would almost increase our cost by a third, upwards of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, which just isn't in my budget. So, I can afford forty thousand, but any more than that, I just, I can't do that, and my wife and I have pretty much said, if we can't get what we want, we really don't want to invest the money into something that's not usable and functional for our family.
Okay, and the details were shown to us, and it was, we felt very appealing, and when I looked at, when we looked at, the neighborhood's got a lot of strengths, but there's a lot of challenges still in some of the housing, and this is what he's done so far in this house, has been very big. I don't know if you had a chance, any of you, since the packet went out, to look at it, but staff and I feel very comfortable with his request, and I think some of it might have been a little bit of a communication thing that hit up with one of the members. Alderman Wiggington?
Mayor, two questions. How often do we see the Historic Preservation Commission deny, to deny a design request? I mean, is this quite often, or is this?
No, it's not, it's not real often, but it does happen. This is only the second time in my memory that we've had an appeal, second time that I remember for sure. The other time was about eight years ago at least, but it's only the second time in the years I've been mayor that we've had an appeal, and I don't remember having an appeal, I don't think, when I was Alderman. It doesn't happen a lot, and they usually are able to work it out, and I think with some of the, the chairman wasn't at the meeting, those two meetings, she was out of the country, and there was just, I think, I think part of it was a communication thing, but he requested to come here.
Second part of the question is, and I'm all for this personally, and I appreciate the fact that this young man is staying in the area, bringing this house up to code, going to raise his family here, are we setting any kind of a precedence on, down the road on appealing a denial, you know, because the Historic Preservation Committee in that area has certain guidelines, we all know that, I mean, are we setting any kind of a precedent?
It's actually written in the ordinance that this is the procedure for an appeal.
Good.
This is the way it's written. It doesn't happen a lot, but I mean, I think he's exercising the way we have the ordinance as been explained and written, and this is the procedure, and he has the right to come. And I think when we aired it out, when we looked, I went over there and looked, you know, I thought, before he came to my office, I went and paid a visit, and I thought I want to educate myself a little bit, and I would have been perfectly honest with him if I thought it was going to be a detriment to the neighborhood, but I think what he's proposing is going to continue to strengthen that neighborhood, and I think it's.
Well, I agree. I think personally, young people like this moving in and raising their families is what's going to keep that area alive.
But he's done some great things with this house already, and, you know, the more young people we can get, invest in some of these older historic properties, I think it's dynamite. Yes, sir?
Well, my time on the Preservation Commission, we were pretty much by the book when it came to the front of the house, and then the side of the house, we were willing to work with people, and the back of the house, I never really had an issue all my time when I was on the Preservation Commission. The back is visible as you walk by, but it is the back of the house, and as Joel said, there's really nothing clear guidelines for the rear of the house.
And the materials that he and the builder, his worker, the guy he's hiring, that came into my office and showed us, I think we all thought they were very tasteful, and I think it'll look great. I think it's just a little bit of a deviation from what was specified, and I think we just had to sit down and study it. So, we're here because it's procedural, and we're here asking you to give your consideration to this.
I looked at it, you know, it's in our ward, so I went and looked at it, and I spoke with, you know, I spoke with the gentleman. What he wants to do really is, it's historic, it's just a different way to do it.
Yeah. It's just a little different than what the.
But it's going to look like, it's not going to look, it's not like they're putting something that's not going to be perfect.
And in all fairness, after I did a little research, he was on the agenda right after a case right before that, that was a lengthy case, almost an hour-long deliberation that was denied, and has to, and I think he kind of, I think the way I had it explained to me, he might have caught the poor timing of when his came up on the review there, there was a lot of exhaustion after an hour-long case prior to that, and so, and he felt he could come to me. Andy?
Yeah, and I think there's been a little bit of turnover with the Preservation Commission. It was aired after that big case, and I think we just approved some people tonight.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I think he came in at a bad time.
It's timing.
Do we know the age of this property? How old is it?
It was built in 1900, sir.
Okay.
Big, beautiful homeowner corner there. If I can get, if we, the city can get a few more people in that neighborhood to do what he's doing, we'll be, we'll be celebrating.
Thanks for doing it.
Okay, so, that's all the questions I think we have for you. So we have a motion and we have a second to approve this gentleman's request, and this is overturning of the initial vote, well, yeah, it was denied at the Historic Preservation Commission. So this motion, this passage of this motion will give this gentleman permission to continue to work with staff and to proceed on the path that he has laid out to staff to get this back porch done. Everybody understand that?
Yep.
Call for a roll call vote.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck on your project, okay? We move on to ordinance legal review. Alderman Wiggington?
11G1, on behalf of Ordinance Legal Review Committee, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 162 zoning by adding Sections 162.425 to 162.428, Solar Energy Systems. So moved.
Have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Hazel. Do I hear any discussion? Alderman Hazel?
When this ordinance came to ordinance legal review, I wanted language added that would exempt certain uses of solar panels, because initially, as written, it would even apply to small, little solar panels that you would have on a sidewalk lighting system, and so homeowner should be able to have a certain amount of a system without having to come to us to ask for permission. And so, language was added, and if I can bring everybody's attention to 162.427, Personal Solar Energy Systems, this is on page two of 11 pages in the ordinance. 162.427, Personal Solar Energy Systems, Paragraph B, Number One, the last sentence there, it states that the average grid-based supporting structure, the highest edge of the system, the size shall not occupy more than 2,500 square feet of ground in any zoning district. So it's limiting those systems to 2,500 square feet. Now, if I can bring you back up to the definitions, the definitions of personal solar energy systems, the last sentence there states that these systems with an aggregate collection and/or focusing area of no more than 25% of the square feet of the subject site are exempt from this ordinance. So that would basically, any ground system that is limited to no more than 2,500 square feet, and we're allowing them up to 25% of the square feet, which on a 10,000 square foot property, that would be 2,500 square feet, we would be allowing a 50 by 50 solar system to be exempt from this ordinance. I propose an amendment to amend that 25% to 1%, which would on a 10,000 square foot property, allow a homeowner to have up to 100 square feet without being subjected to this.
Review. Right, special use, okay? So this brings it down within, doesn't take away the fact that somebody could still have a smaller amount that would be automatic, but if it gets above the 1% of the 10,000 square foot property, yeah, it probably should be reviewed and should be considered as a special use. So, you're asking that that be added to the motion?
Yeah, that that be amended from 25%.
Alderman Wiggington, are you willing to do that?
Absolutely. That's a very, very good point. Alderman Hazel brought up some wonderful ideas in committee that night, and Nissa had a very, very, very good PowerPoint that night explaining exactly what this is, but I think Alderman Hazel's right on the money.
Okay, so I think that's, and Alderman Hazel, you include that with your second?
Yes.
So does everybody understand the motion with those, that amendment, that change for the motion and the second, the two people both agree? Are there further questions about this motion, number 11G1? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Concilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Tyler?
Abstained.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bud, you can get rid of those two. Communications?
Together?
Together, no problem? Okay.
12A Banner Request, request from St. Clair County Historical Society to place four advertising banners for their 25th anniversary candlelight house tour in the city's right-of-way. 12B Spirit the City, October 19th, 2018, request from School District 201, asking permission to use the Northeast Quadrant and the Southeast Quadrant for a pep rally Friday, October 19th, 2018, 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. They will have bands from both schools, they would like to drop them off right in front of the quadrants, they will make every effort not to be too disruptive to traffic, this event will be covered by at least one of the St. Louis news stations.
Do I hear motion to approve these two requests? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Guy, that are coming for a request for communications to approve. Let me just say, on the second one, just to let you know, and Superintendent Dozier's going to get back with me, it looks like the St. Louis news station now is going to set up for their whole morning newscast downtown, and so I'm waiting to hear from them, they're supposed to contact me tomorrow, that's this Friday, and this thing is kind of growing, so I suggested that we still had time to get it approved. I want to make sure it's clear, the police chief and I will talk once I hear from this news station. We may close off for a few hours, but it'll be open way before business opens downtown. We may close off the first block of East Main, just for the sake of safety, unloading these children, and depending on where we set up this news station for that few hours. So, they'll basically be there, the news station, from 5 until probably about 9, but we'll have things back open and, you know, no obstruction. So, everybody understand that? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, correct? If there's no further discussion or questions, all in favor, the two motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have no petitions, we have no resolutions. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, correct? If there's no further discussion or questions, all in favor, the two motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have no petitions, we have no resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance eighty-five, eighty-two fifty-six, eighty-two fifty-seven, eighty-two fifty-eight, eighty-two fifty-nine, eighty-two sixty, eighty-two sixty-one, eighty-two sixty-two, eighty-two sixty-three, eighty-two sixty-four, eighty-two sixty-five, eighty-two sixty-six, eighty-two sixty-seven, and eighty-two sixty-eight.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, a second by Alderman Schaefer.
Will we read them as a group?
Yeah.
We can read them by title only and as a group, is that a problem? Alderman?
Fifteen K has amended.
And noting that fifteen K has just amended, everybody understand that?
Yep. Got it.
We'll do the last two separate then, okay? Is that, is that, yeah, we'll do the last two separate. So, everybody understand the motion, we're going to read through K by title only and as a group. All in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-two fifty-six, twenty eighteen, and ordinance amending chapter seventy-six, party schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville, Illinois, as amended by amending portions of sections thereof.[1527.41]